Twenty fourteen.
I'm going to make the motion to approve the meeting minutes for twenty eight to twenty four.
Motion made by Mr. Arrigius, Secretary of the Council, Nanto. All in favor?
Aye.
By all opposed? Four zero. Can you business? Consideration and action to approve the March for Life sponsored by the Knights of Columbus? Mr. Gilbert Regis, do you wish to comment?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Israel Lopez, representing Council sixty-six forty-one here in Florisburg. We are, of course, asking for permission to do a march for life on August, October, I'm sorry, October the fourth of two thousand and fourteen. And we would like to, of course, extend an invitation to all of you to attend. We will be here starting at the Knights of Columbus Hall at seven o'clock on October the fourth. We would have a procession to the church, Secretary of our Church, and also an event after the mass. So, like I said, we would like to send an invitation and ask for approval.
There any, or there any road closure?
Uh, no, no, we're not.
Escort.
I spoke to the chief and we're gonna have an escort.
Escort.
We're gonna have, you know, kind of road closure.
Yes, it usually takes about thirty minutes to process from the Knights of Columbus to church and that's, that's about it.
That is a Saturday, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, now I have a motion.
I'm going to make the motion to approve the March for Life sponsored by the Knights of Columbus.
A second.
Motion made by Mr. Arrigius, Secretary of the Council, Nanto. Is there any citizen comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Most passed four to zero. Thank you, Mr. Arrigius. Okay, also new business. Consideration and adoption of this ordinance by the City Council of the City of Florisburg, Texas, authorizing the issuance of City of Florisburg, Texas Electric Light and Power System Improvement Revenue Bonds Series twenty fourteen, providing for the payment of the principal of and interest on the bonds, together with certain currently outstanding obligations by first and prior means on and pledge of the net revenue to the city's combined utility system, providing the terms and conditions of such bonds and resolving other matters incident relating to the issuance, payment, security, sale, and delivery of such bonds, including the approval and distribution of an official statement pertaining thereto, authorizing the execution of the paying agent, registrar, agreement, and the purchase contract, complying with the requirements of the depositary trust company's letter of representation, providing for an effective date. Mr. Dickey.
Mayor Fortin Barrera, council members, mayor, manager, member of the city staff, thank you for allowing us to come for you again tonight. As you know, we've come to you several times over the last couple of months. We're working through a process of issuing, of selling bonds and issuing debt for the capital construction program for a power system. And as you're aware, we go through this process scheduled every three years. With it comes a rate review and capital construction plan review. And we've been through that process with you. We've seen the new rates. We, uh, two meetings ago, Lee, was you approved the preliminary official statement, which allowed us to get the process started. Where we are tonight is we are seeking your approval to actually make a sale, a sale on the bonds. Earlier today, first thing this morning, the Phelps Board of Trustees passed a similar resolution to what you're asking me to pass tonight. And we do this on the same day as the council meeting, because just yesterday, late yesterday afternoon, we received the pricing, the interest rates, and all the information we got for the sale of these bonds. And so we're coming to you for your approval to move forward with this project that we have been working on and working with you on for the last several months. Before the meeting, I gave each of you a presentation found like this. I gave a copy to Commander Turner and left one for Mr. Rosenberg as well. I left extras for the council members of the mayor who are not here tonight. This is just a very high-level summary of what came out of the last couple of days' worth of pricing and weeping and waiting and answering the teeth. And this is where it, where it, where it all comes through. And we'll walk through this quickly, but follow me and stop me if you have questions. If I can't answer your questions, we have a finance advisor for bonds, Mr. Bob Henderson here with us. And, excuse me, Clay Benford, legal counsel for the bond project as well. I believe you, you've met both of them and seen them in front of you before. So feel free to ask any one of those questions, should you, should you want to do that. This is quickly a market update of where the market is. It gives us the sale results, what we found out yesterday afternoon, and then give us the various credit rating reports that we've discussed. We were rated this year by Standard and Poor's and by Fitch as the two rating agencies that we work with. Section one gives a market update. The, what you see here on this first page is the Bond Buyer Twenty Index. You can see it goes back to January of eighty-five. And this is just a simple index of where the market has been over the last roughly thirty years. You can see we were going from ten percent range thirty years ago. We've had a general downward trend in rates to where we are today, in the four percent range. So this is good. It just tells us that borrowing money, what we need to do for capital construction, is cheaper than it was thirty years ago, in some, in some limited terms. The thirty-five-year historical perspective is on the next page. You can see today's level of four point eight-three is lower than the eighty-nine point, the eighty-six percent of historical rates since, since September of seventy-nine. So, just, again, it's just reaffirmation that the market is good now for borrowing money. Section two is the sale results. This is what we, we came through yesterday. If you look at what's, maybe this is page six, issue summary. This is the financing team, which gives you an overview of who worked on this project, City of Florisburg and Phelps, RBC Capital Management, the Bond Council with Graceful Giuliani, Assistant Council is Huxman Matthews. Frost Bank is a senior underwriter, co-managing, co-managing, or junior underwriter, Lee Samco. We, we do have one mistake on the Bond Council should be Fulbright and Jaworski on here, and the underwriter's council is Council of Graceful and Giuliani.
And the one that was gonna be brought in.
And the paying agent is the Bank of Mellon, Bank of New York Mellon. The pricing date was yesterday, September the tenth. Delivery date will be October the second, in a couple of weeks, then we will deliver funds. And our first interest payment date will be in February of next year. The arbitrage yield, yield you see was three point one, four, four percent. But the all-in TIC, and TIC stands for True Interest Cost. True, the True Interest Cost, you see, is three point seven three five percent. When we were working through this project, we're presenting forecast numbers to you, and we were doing our budget and, and all of that process, we were planning on having a four percent interest rate, true and cost interest rate. So for this to come back at three point seven three five percent is very good news for us. It doesn't sound like a big change in change. We're talking nine and a half million dollars every little bit on the interest rate helps. And we got the interest rate, a better interest rate, in large part because of the health of the financial, financial health of the system. So, final maturity date will be in twenty thirty-nine, and it'll have a call date of twenty twenty-four. And, again, more statistics to show there. The page seven is the sources and uses of funds. And the principal amount on this bond will be eight point nine three five million dollars. And the net original issue premium is five hundred and sixty-two thousand, so the total sources are nine point four nine seven million dollars. And I will, I'm gonna let Bob step up and explain those numbers a little bit better, but you can see the total deposit to the project fund is nine point two nine million dollars, and the underwriter discount and cost of insurance and legal counsel is about two hundred and seven thousand dollars. So, you can see the total sources of money is nine point four nine seven million, and the total use of the money is nine point four nine seven. Essentially, those, those numbers do balance. We have a debt service schedule on page eight, from twenty fifteen through twenty thirty-nine, what our debt service will be each year, what the interest payment will be each year in the total debt service over the course of the, of the project. And then section three is our credit rating reports from Fitch and from S and B. And I won't, I won't read those, through those for you. Those were issued last week in the form of press releases, so you may have already seen them, or Wilson County News has seen them. In summary, Standard and Poor's affirmed our A-plus rating, and, which is a excellent rating for a public power system of our size, and they left our outlook as being stable. And Fitch ratings give us a better, or give us a better bond rating at the double A-minus. However, what they, they did downgrade our outlook to negative from stable. And that was based on their concerns of debt service coverage ratios over the next three to five years. And what that, what they're telling us is they don't believe that we will have enough funds on hand in reserve to cover debt service funds. And that is, they strive for about a one point seven five percent coverage ratio. Our numbers that are projected and are forecast are the one point seven, one point seven two range. So we're not far below, but we are below their threshold. The good news and the shining light in this is it's a correctable situation. We can correct this by everything from increasing our revenues, higher electricity sales, adding customers. We can do it by trimming our operational expenses, looking for savings on the operational side. But the funny thing about this is the nine point five million dollars in bond revenue does not play into that equation. So it's not like we can take the bond revenue money, transfer it somewhere else, and get that coverage rate to be because of the restricted nature of the bonds.
How much are you required to have in reserves?
How much? It's not a set number.
Well, in a, in a, typically, it's in a, in a month, or ninety days, sixty days?
Uh, we strive for ninety days, quarter of a year, is what we, we strive to do.
Well, that's right. You strive for twenty-five percent, ninety days, but it's not a hard badge requirement by rating agencies. It's just a guide, apply, just one, about half a dozen key rating factors, but it's not the only thing.
And the funny thing is with the rating agencies is you can get downgraded for having too much in reserve, for having too much cash on hand, have too much in the bank, because they feel if you have too much in the bank, then you're charging rates that are too high to supplement that. So if you have a one point five times coverage on that side, or if you had a hundred and eighty-day or two hundred and seventy-day supply, they would view that as negative. So it's a, there's, there's a fine line tipping point in there between what, what you need to have and what they want you to have, and what's too much and what's not enough. And it's a moving target. That's what makes it difficult.
I have a question. Why is, shouldn't the, the rating that, that they're giving be the same as the rating that we have as well?
No.
Two separate.
Two completely separate lines of business, two separate lines of books. So while we, we sell loans under the same umbrella as the City of Florisburg, we are valued financially wholly separate from, from the two orgies.
It'd be nice if you, why, Andrew's got that, and that was why I generated the question was because of that.
And, and in a typical municipal utility setting, that's where the system is owned by one city, that would be, that could be the case. But since we have a very unique setup, where three cities have equity ownership, we, we have to keep them on some business and build this up.
And the, the other thing that bears on that is the fact that there are revenue streams that supports the bond, the electric. There may be water, here may be sewer, here may be alcohol, here may be cell tanks.
Oh, and, and I was basing, you know, I based my question on the, there are the recent, you know, they've basically just gotten their credit rating, and if their credit rating is, you know, if, if we're supposed to be the same, then that would be, that our credit rating is a little bit higher than, than what we had initially as well.
Well, they're a good indication for what we've got to come. It's a good, good indicator.
Okay.
One of the key rating factors, probably, is, is the source of payment for the bonds. And so really just explaining exactly all what you said, their source of payment is strictly utility system revenues. City of Florisburg has the opportunity to play the alcohol and property taxes, or water and sewer utility system revenues. And your water and sewer utility system revenue, bond rating, will be different from your tax secured bond rating. So the rating agencies are just looking at, what is the source of the credit behind the bond?
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson, we're the issuer. Can you get a percentage of the gross spread?
Uh, the gross spread is riding, just. You, you did that to me last time.
Mr. Dickey, is there a plan to increase of reserves to satisfy Fitch? I mean, at what point do we, do you develop a plan to increase?
Well, we're, we're already developing that plan. We have a financial forecast that was developed many years ago by our previous financial advisor man named Don Thomas, and he has retired a couple of years ago, and we've taken on a new financial advisor taking his place upon the council chairman, Steve Moffett from Schneider Engineering. He was here, spoke to you when we did the rate and cost of service bill. What we have planned is that after we get the budget preparation complete for two thousand and fifteen, which will go through October, we are going to update and modernize that financial forecast, because it was based on our old rate structure, our old income, revenue projections, and the like. And so now that we'll have a couple of months of billing under the new rate structure, we're able to update that plan. And so that's the, that's the first step that we'll do. The second step is to make an accounting change that, over at Phelps, it's something we've not done before. On our capital and construction costs, we have any project that have been charging salaries to work on the capital construction projects to the capital construction budget. We can also charge the benefits that go along with those salaries, health insurance, life insurance, retirement, the like, liability insurance. We have not been charging that toward our capital construction budget. We've been absorbing that out of our daily, daily operations budget. So if we have a crew that spends eight hours a day working on a job, we have just built eight hours of base salary and charged that toward construction and capital construction costs. Adding in, as you know, adding in the benefits, I mean, that, that sometimes adds twenty, twenty-five, thirty percent to the cost of an employee. So you know, a ten dollar employee does the cost of the company, ten dollars in that one.
Contractors come out of the same, out of the same.
It depends on what they're working on. Yeah, if it's contractors on capital construction, yes, absolutely, they can come out of that fund. But if they're working on maintenance, say, oil replacement or general maintenance, that's an operational cost. So, and that's why we have, if we have contractors in, they have to specify what job they're working on for how many hours, so we know where to classify that money, or those expenditures, I should say.
Do you have a question?
I, I have one question. I might look at, um, on page three, if I can get a copy of the gentleman's focus on that for a minute.
Mr. Ruth, per page three of which I'm.
I just, first the statement.
May I come?
You can.
On the, on the graphic, you ordered?
The one that's in your book.
That, that? Well, in white, yes, Chris.
Okay. Well, we, so again, it's maturity stretch on page three of the official statement. You'll notice there's some skips in the fiscal years, and the reason they're doing that is because there are term bonds, where you, where you bond a couple of years of maturities together to get a larger bond issue size, because these bonds are being sold in large lots to property casualty insurance companies like Allstate, State Farm, some big municipal bonds, like Oppenheimer, Frank's, UnderAmerican Funds. So a lot of these major institutional buyers want to own an entire maturity and sizable block. So what they do is they combine, and notice when you look at the maturity schedule in the second row, you'll see how the size of the maturities seem to be outsized compared to previous numbers, because it combines a couple of those maturities to create a term bond. Short interest mechanism to get you better interest rates. Because we can, that's what I wanted to.
Yeah.
If we can, if we can get to an Allstate insurance company that wants the bonds or some bonds, and we accommodate that, they charge us less interest.
And that relates to the fact these are municipal bonds, because they don't pay taxes.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no further questions, can I have a motion? Or citizens' comments? Go, we have a motion, Anderson. Do we have a motion?
Do we have to read this final ordinance, is that what we, with?
Yes, just read, read the caption, please, in its entirety.
When I'm gonna read all sixty pages?
No, no, not all sixty. We can do with half of the first page.
I make a motion.
Unless you also experienced tonight in reading it.
No, 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 I. I make a motion to approve an ordinance by the City Council of the City of Florisburg, Texas, authorizing the issuance of City of Florisburg, Texas Electric Light and Power System Improvement Revenue Bonds Series twenty fourteen, providing for the payment of the principal and the interest on the bonds, together with certain currently outstanding obligations by first and prior means on and pledge of the net revenues of the city's combined utility system, providing the terms and conditions of such bonds, resolving other matters incident relating to the issuance, payment, security, sale, and delivery of such bonds, including the approval and distribution of an official statement pertaining thereto, authorizing the execution of the paying agent, registrar agreement, and the purchase contract, complying with the requirements of the depository trust company's letter of representation, and providing for an effective date.
A second.
Motion's been made by, by Councilor.
Yes.
Second by Councilor Castillo. Is there any citizen comment? All in favor?
Aye.
I stand.
Stand, one. Three, zero, one, four.
Thank you. And Mr. Barrera, and Council, I want to remind you that we're gonna come back to your meeting in two weeks on the twenty-fifth, because we also have the issue of refunding the Series two thousand and two bonds, like we talked about this right here for last time, essentially refinancing the rates. And that, that's gonna come as a separate motion, a separate, a separate agenda item. But we'll come back in two weeks. It'll be a very similar process to what we did tonight. But that just gives us authorization to refund the bonds, as we pointed out before. It's about two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollar savings to the electric utility. And that will be another step to get us where we need to get.
How much are we gonna say, two hundred and eighty, some odd pages to read?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. I've, I've read more pages than, but, but, so I just, make you aware, we'll be back in two weeks for a similar process. We'll be shorter and more to the point than was tonight, which is your authorization to refund and refinance the two thousand and two series of bonds. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, there are new business. Two cities, consideration and action to approve city holidays for the year twenty fifteen.
Yes, this is just, if you'll look at your binders, Council, this is just for next year's holidays, and if you look at the second page, there's a calendar that shows you, you know, the only thing basically that I changed were, you know, it moves over a day from last year's, and then I took away the one on Thursday, because this year, we work in Thursday, the ninth of October. Normally, we have the two dates for, for Peanut Festival. I took that back and, and left, put it back on for Peanut Festival, because next year, Christmas is Thursday and Friday. This year, remember, we had switched it to give us the three days for Christmas.
That was the one that was approved by the, by the employees as well?
Yes, we did, and we did that, because this year for Christmas, Christmas is Wednesday and Thursday, and we would have had to come back to it on Friday, and then the weekend. So we took away the Thursday and, and put it on Friday after Christmas. So I just put that back, so you'll see the two dates on, on Peanut Festival, and you'll see the third of July for, Fourth of July is, Fourth of July falls on Saturday.
Any questions, Council? Okay, then may I have a motion?
Make the motion to approve the city hall, city holidays for the year twenty fifteen.
You have a second?
I second it.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Arrigius, Secretary of the Council, Nanto. Any citizen comment? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Barrera, I had told you before, if you don't believe it, we need to signature.
Okay, okay.
Now that you've gone on, spent this money, you're gonna have to.
If you're off, right.
Get your emergency press hour. There are five, there are five, oh, five.
Okay, do we have any citizen comment? City holidays? Okay, motion made by Mr. Arrigius, Secretary of the Council, Nanto. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Most passed four to zero. Okay, two D's, consideration and action regarding setting city council meeting dates for October, November, and December twenty fourteen.
Okay, Council.
October the ninth is a regularly scheduled council meeting. That is in our Peanut Festival coronation. I know, I will not be here, but if you choose to keep your meeting, and see, or if you wanna reschedule it, or if you don't wanna have a meeting and just have your twenty-third meeting, you know, that's up to y'all. And in November, the same thing, on the twenty-seventh, that's a regularly scheduled meeting. It's a city holiday. And then also in December, the twenty-fifth, it's a city holiday, and it's Christmas, and I don't want to be here. So I, I mean, I just need to know if y'all wanna do with an extra meeting, we'll have to set the dates, or if you wanna just go with just the one meeting for the next three months.
Can we, I wanted to get an expression.
We can.
Schedule, schedule meeting?
We can, y'all can vote that, and we can, I just need, you know, so that we have official right.
Thanksgiving, Christmas, and then.
Because one of the things is backing up to, like I said, in October, backing up to Peanut Festival, that we've already voted to have two closed, and so it'd be hard for us to have a meeting here. We can have it annexed, but it's kind of, you already signed the peanut festival.
And the twenty, the twenty-third of October, it will be at the annex, because that's early going. Why are you going to start for the twenty?
And you've done such hard work getting us here, and deflected a quick break after the meeting, and I understand that originally, we released every two hundred and thirty early August, but we started in July, and we still do it in September, so that may be a good break. And I think Councilor Nanto has a good point, that if there is an emergency, we can have a special meeting, although the off meetings are off, we have a seventy-two hour notice. But we perceive that actually, it'll slow down a little bit, it works at two.
So is our pay graded, or?
Actually, no, we, you get the whole seventy-five. But you allow us to have our typical payday, so we'll let you have your holidays as well.
What do we, how do we, the holiday needs, the meet first?
What's your recommendation?
They're just gonna do the one of mine.
No, no? Motion to meet once, for October, or the?
October, November, April, December, once a month.
Right, and on the schedule, and the Council, Anderson, please?
Yes, scheduled.
On the day scheduled and the handout?
Which, announce the dates, then?
Which would, for the record, would be the twenty-third of October, the twenty-seventh of, sorry.
The thirteenth.
Thirteen of January.
Thirteen of November.
November.
I make a motion. Make a motion to approve the meeting dates for October, the twenty-third, November the thirteenth, and December the eleventh, for the upcoming months. Is that right?
That's correct. You want to have a second?
Yeah, 23rd, 13th, and 11th. I make the motion to check proof, though.
Johnny, we already need...
Oh, I second it. Motion made by Mr. Natto, second by Mr. Rodriguez, is there any citizen comment? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion carries forward. TD?
Thank you, John.
TD, consideration and action to approve orders of moving and adopting a budget for City of Florisville, Texas, for 2014, 2015, beginning October 1st, 2014, and ending September 30th, 2015.
I'd like to give a question to you, if I know you know, I'm afraid you didn't recognize my hair, but...
Good evening. I'm sure that you got the new copies, another tree that we just killed, where all the numbers for the budget for all the funds were entered in the system. They have not been posted yet, and we have to close this year before we post a new budget. But they're already in there, ready, numbers have not changed, everything is the same. Do you have any questions on the one that we gave you last two? I want to go ahead and mention that there was a request for two police cars on this budget that was not approved, so they are not in this budget. Also, I had initially put the $12,000 for the municipal court technology, for them to go ahead and start using the cap scene. I thought, also, I took out of this budget, because we're doing it on the current budget, it was approved, and we did a budget amendment. I also want to mention the construction for the security exit for the municipal court chambers, and that also I had initially put it on the new budget, but because we approved it, we did a budget amendment, I went ahead and I did that correctly.
We are looking, ma'am. One of the things, a collaborative effort, and I think Councilor Castillo pointed out some things we may need to check, mostly script errors or graphical, or maybe some errors in reference to grammar, reference to the first three, industry, but we can be able to address that and make other amendments as we go forward, just to change, to really correct any mistakes we may have missed. But I do want to say thank you for working so hard and putting this budget together, as the teams came together and the staff came together to work on this first budget that the two of us were able to put together for you. Add your hard work and time, and give themselves and the evenings to nauseam almost to be here as we did this and took the effort to do that. So I want to thank you for your hard work and putting this together, and we're looking forward to see how we're going to be able to do, because on the cover, we're going to address in solid language what our goal is, so that we can give to our bidding, like our utility company is, that's our goal, and that's going to be one of the things, the 90 days that Councilor mentioned earlier is our goal and we're striving for this year. So in the reserves, I think Castillo's going to be happy to know when we're finished and we're able to close the books, we're able to let you know exactly how much we were able to put into our 90-day fund, so we're looking forward to that.
And also, I would like to mention that if you have any concerns, or if you would like, when you make a motion to address if there's any amendments that require, are required for these budgets, that we can hopefully do at a later time. The only thing is that this budget has to be approved today, because we have to have an approved budget 30 days before it's implemented, which is October 1st. As it is, we already linked, we're not within the 30 days. So we cannot go to next council meeting to approve it, because then we're not going to be compliant now.
There had been a question regarding the hotel motel tax, if you have an explanation on that?
Yes, and if you can see on the hotel motel fund, last year, for this current budget, there was a budget of $120,000 to be transferred to the general fund to cover for the expenditures of the civic center. I have not acted on that, because I don't have confirmation that I can do that. I've been calling the controller's office, but I haven't gotten any response or any phone calls back. Now, on the new budget, I said again, budget $120,000 to be transferred, but if that is approved, that would be like a reimbursement to the city for this current year. But being in the budget, that doesn't mean that it's going to happen. We need to have approval from the controller's office, I have to have it in writing before I can go ahead and act into that transfer.
And the explanation on that page, and I can't find it right now, but it was different from the one from last year, is transmitted to the...
Yes.
The 4A?
Yeah, it is different, because what I did is, I went ahead and, instead of transferring it to general fund, we're going to transfer it to 4A, just in case they need that money for operations, and then we will address any refunds to general fund if they're approved by the controller's office.
Because historically, what you've been doing is you've been using the general fund to do maintenance and those kind of things. We're not using any of our general funds in reference to the operations of the community center, and so our deal is to help them if they're not able to make their payment in that portion, but the operations, and we all know now, they have enough money to do whatever maintenance they need, so that's why we're not funding any of that. So that's really important, and that money, and I want to say something about $900,000...
$835,000.
$835,000 there, it's shown there in 4A, for them to do their construction and those kind of things, maintenance and whatever they need for that community center, so we're going to be able to use those funds and not have to use city general fund for that.
However, even though we do have that money for construction, we still need the operating fund for salaries and daily operations, so we're not going to be able to cover those expenditures with a sales tax, because we also going to restructure the debt for that community center, and we don't know how much those payments are going to be. So we need to keep that in mind also. We might need to supplement the operating expenditures for the civic center, how much? We don't know yet, it is all on the payment for the restructuring debt.
Well, so what is the total budget amount for our job?
You have it... Can you just give me on? On the current budget, there was not a recap of all the funds, which I decided to include this year, because I really like to see the bottom line. So there is a recap for all the funds, and you will see on this recap, that the final proposed council budget is $9,503,456, and that amount includes also the range of 2.5% to 4.5% merit raise to the employees. It also includes the bargaining, collective bargaining for the police department raises and advancements, and include, I think that's the only plan that went over the budget, the police department, and the reason why it went over the budget from last year is because of the collective bargaining. All the other funds stay the same amount, bottom line.
So what's the percentage over this year's?
I didn't calculate that.
Okay, so what is the dollar amount?
The dollar amount is $9,503,456.
No, compared to this, this year's?
This year was $8,369,090.
$369 what?
$090.
Thank you.
And if you, if you notice, on the, on the city manager's proposed, yes, on the city manager's proposed budget, we actually were under, because the current year was $8,369,090, and the one that we proposed was $8,255,291, but it's not included in merits at all.
So that's going to increase to 1, 4.11.
1.14?
1.134, 366. Did you got that?
Did you? Did you make a note of that, Councilor?
No, I didn't.
1.134.
366.
It's not bad, it's good.
You guys are trying to make competition in the comments?
Yes, sir.
If I may, can I reflect just a minute on the hotel motel tax? We've talked about this in budget workshops, two times, three times. We still need to make those transfers and get the controller's office approval to list our home to get it to show it. We still got to make that connection, primacy document, where we show that that tax is related to hotel motel promotion and utilization, and that's going to take marketing efforts and documentary efforts and help us in that. So either the 4A, manager, or somebody on the staff has to take and connect, we talked about this the other night, collection of the tax, the utilization of that, in most cities, but they're head to head, they're head to bed, and that's the part of our ingredient that we have, that we don't have well documented. Where we show that maintenance of the civic center is an ongoing activity, which you can describe in our report. Part of our ingredient, second part of the test, missing, is to show that we connected some conventions, utilization, this kind of hotels, we're going to have two nights in town, you all have been to conventions before, you know, when you go to convention and say, oh, for Texas, we get a discount, if you're going to a different event, that's the part of our utilization that we need your approval.
So then we can make the approval with the exception of the hotel motel, the use of the hotel motel tax until the amendment is required?
You can put something that's stated, it's not being, it's not being transferred, okay? But I'm trying to just talk about next year and where you're going, because we've got a fairly significant amount of money set aside in hotel motel tax, and the two part of that test, the second part is showing that it brings people to town. Let me use the Quinceanera example, in case you have some management issues. If my part of the family lives in Borato, comes to my daughter's Quinceanera, and I can document, not that I'm the one that is doing this, assuming that it's being done by our people, if I can document that over half of my family uses a hotel or motel in town, but then the Quinceanera, then I've met the test, okay? But if the Quinceanera is all made up for a billion, and I haven't met the head and bed test, and that's the part we need to work on, so we can utilize that money and spend that money. And I hope that that illustration comes across to you. It's hotel motel tax, and it's got to come full circle and come around and support the hotels and motels and bring people to town. For example, one last illustration, last week, I went to the International Railway Association Conference in San Marcos. Had I gone there and stayed Thursday night, which our original plans did, they would have been able to check off, Lou Rosenberg attended the convention, and stayed at the Holiday Inn the night before, took the 20% discount. That would satisfy the hotel motel tax requirement, and that's the ingredient on our documentary side, missing. We can show the main building, we pay the electrical, we pay the employees, that part, I have time, that we can reimburse ourselves on, but it's the rest of that considerable amount of money that we don't have the marketing test on. I hope I'm making myself clear.
So who would it be up to to keep track of the heads? Would it be the hotel, or do we have to have some type of process?
We need a process to do all of them, we've got the papers from the Hotel Association yesterday, Monica has them for the new year, and we can go back and make some adjustments on this year, but that's why Ms. Moreno's waiting for the controller's office for some documents she's submitted. So I'm just trying to tell you, the missing ingredient is the marketing side, okay? Like, for example, if you went to the Texas Municipal League in Houston, you're going to have two dozen hotels that are saying, we need the tax requirement, because we've got TML, 4,000 people staying here, 4,000 people need the individual tax, and therefore, they can spend the money however they want in Houston for promotion, tourism, and even historical preservation and arts, those nine items that are qualified. So that's what we're missing on that expenditure.
Counselor, any other questions? Do you want to have a motion?
I make a motion to approve an ordinance, approve and adopt a budget for the City of Florisville, Texas, for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2014, ending September 30th, 2015, and make appropriations for each fund and department, establishing a sinking fund for existing city financial obligations, providing for the living and collection of sufficient tax to pay the interest on such sinking and fund obligations, repealing conflicting ordinance, providing a saving and severability clause, and declaring an effective date.
Does anyone have a second? Is that a second?
Yes.
Motion made by Mr. Natto, second by Councilor Castillo. How about you? Yeah, I was going to complete that next.
Before I start, let me say, I'm well aware that what I'm going to say means probably more work for somebody, but for many months, I guess, as long as I've been coming here, I'm very concerned about the way things are presented, particularly when we've got something this important, pretty heavy duty, wouldn't you say? A budget for the City of Florisville? What is the purpose of having an open meeting if the citizens never know what the heck you guys are doing? Not that you have anything here that I would question, because I don't, but just procedurally, I would like to see presentations over here on the things that you guys are going to vote on, that we can understand what it is that you're doing and how it's going to affect us. For example, do we have a budget here that's going to have deficits over this? Are we doing very well, or are we doing very badly? I would just like to see a recap at least, in very simple terms, as to what's being healed in this budget. And I know that it means doing some work, but I think that's necessary when you're presenting something that affects us very dearly, in this case, and in some cases, not as much, but nevertheless, affects the citizens of Florisville. I would like to see presentations done here by the staff, and by you, when you have that kind of a thing, that at least gives us an understanding, just a little recap. You don't have to go into details, I don't have to know what's in the, in the documents, but you know, it's, you've seen all of these. I haven't been to the budget meetings, maybe that's a fault of mine, but I'm not required to do that. But when you have an open meeting, presentation on a budget that's going to be voted, that's going to affect us directly, I would like to know at least some of the basic things going into that budget, how it affects us, are there some problems, are you guys working on something to fix something? Please, just a little recap, I'm not asking for much. Thank you very much.
Thanks, very much.
Before you vote, I have one other item that sort of, oh, Mr. Gonzalez, and that is, there was one significant change, I believe, on Ms. Moreno, if you'll check me on this. if you'll check me on this. Based on our discussion with volunteer fire department, we talked about the contract. We have a change this year. It's applicable to your discussion here, and I think the points were made. The fire people can document $28,000. We questioned them about the documentation and the non-line items. But we have agreed in the budget, proposing to two, agreeing the budget to go to $60,000, to give the fire department a more adequate budget. And we also have that April 1, due date, which suggested in the contract. And based on the exchange correspondence with Mr. Berger and myself, we are agreement with the contract. And I mention this because I intend to read the contract two years ago at the meeting. But I want you to know, if you hear that it's being proposed in the budget, if you're thinking that with a question.
And he's there. I went ahead and worked the numbers as I was asked. And he has budgeted $60,000 for the fire department expenditures.
Any other comment? Okay, motion made by Mr. Neto, second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed?
Motion carries forward. Two D. Considering it's a very substantial, very important living taxes for the maintenance, operation of the city of Florisville and provided by the interest in sinking fund for the year 2014.
I have freely presented to you the proposed tax rate, which was a rollback rate to avoid any rollback election. And I also have disclosed, unless you wanted to go ahead and say it again, that tax rate rollback is .3252. The percentage for maintenance and operations is .1631. And for interest in sinking is .162.